Calling into session, the Anchorage School District Board meeting. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2019. Happy April Fool's Day, everyone. I hope you survived. How about Emily? Would you like to do the flag salute for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And if you'd like to go ahead and read the opening statement?
We would like to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks you, thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you're unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of the meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. And at this time, I move to approve the agenda. Is there any dissensions? No dissensions, then agenda is approved. Time for reports. And Colonel, thank you for being here. I know you guys got a lot going on right now. Nope. Help us to the ref-- there we go.
I could start punching a bunch of buttons, but people will get mad.
One of them will finally work.
I usually mess that up, anyway. Well, good evening, School Board, and thank you for offering me the opportunity again to speak. Military-connected students have long been considered a valuable part of the student population in the Anchorage School District, and we appreciate tonight's action item, supporting a resolution to recognize April as the month of the military child. This shows a continued commitment by the school district to support this population. As you know, many schools take time to purple up or wear the color of purple throughout the month, and they have special celebrations throughout the month of April. Purple Up is a grassroots initiative started in 2011 in New Hampshire by the 4-H program. They chose purple as a combination of colors, not exactly the right, you know, mathematical combination, but it's a combination of our Army green for our soldiers, a Marine red for our Marine Corps brethren, Coast Guard, Air Force, and Navy blue. And so our students are fortunate to be welcomed into such a supportive community, so thank you for that. I just wanted to remind once more that the Air Force-sponsored Military Child Education Coalition training has been rescheduled for April 15th at the Crown Plaza Hotel here in Anchorage. The event was canceled in January due to inclement weather. This free one-day training titled "Supporting Veterans' Children Through Transitions" targets youth-serving educators, professionals, and parents. Participants will learn more about the unique transition issues that military children face when their parents separate from the military or when they transition communities. Flyers for this event are on the table by the door. We look forward to sharing this opportunity with the Anchorage School District staff, our parents, and the greater Anchorage community. Paying any questions, that's my report for the month.
Board members have any questions, comments? As always, thank you for your service and thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Have a great night.
You, too. Student Advisory. Do you have a report for us, Emily?
Our last meeting was on the 26th, and our, sort of our biggest item was we worked on amending a resolution in support of the wearing of regalia at graduation, which we're hoping to bring to the school board soon after the spring OSOG meeting. And then we also met with, we have a new advisor who's working with us because Mr. McGinley has been unable to with the transitions at King Tech High.
Thank you. And I know we had communications meeting. Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, we had a communications committee meeting this past, on March 27th, I believe it was Thursday, and we talked about an event that's coming up, the Budget Question and Answer Session. That'll be April 15th from 4:00 to 5:30 here in this room, and that will be an opportunity for anybody in the community to come and ask whatever questions they have about the budget. How does it work? What do the various things go to? Whatever questions you might have. And that will also be a live event, so we'll be getting more information out about that. We also talked about the funding resolution that's on our agenda for a little bit later on, and there's also going to be a joint Student Advisory Board/School Board meeting, and that is going to be on April 15th also.
Third.
April 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. So if any of the board members can make it to that, it would be really wonderful. I unfortunately will not be able to be there. But is that during your regular meeting, Emily?
No.
Okay. But your members know about that. Perfect. Okay. And then we also talked about the possibility of going out into the community and doing some general listening posts where school board members would just be maybe in the library and a grocery store, and for people who have issues that they want to share with us, they could just stop by and share thoughts, kudos, concerns, whatever, ideas that they have. So that is that. And then I also wanted to share that Jim Anderson and I were invited by the Trinnigan PTA to go and talk to their membership about the education budget, and that was a really worthwhile discussion. People got to ask their questions and raise some concerns, and so if there are any other groups who would like board members and folks from the administration to do that, that is out there. And we did have an Ad-Ha Committee meeting. Are you going to talk about that, Mark?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, and I'll be sending out in more detail, but I just got back, as I think many of you know, I got on a 5:00 a.m. flight in Philadelphia. I was at the National School Board Association Conference, and it was three days of just really wonderful learning, and there were 7,000 people there from across the country and just a lot of energy. And a couple of the, it's great to hear a lot of things that we are already doing as a district. One of the keynote speakers who works in HR worldwide talked about high school graduates and the need to get them more career-ready and possibly even having certificates of, you know, readiness for certain careers, and we're starting to do that here in our district with the pathways that we're developing, and the idea of also having students have an internship opportunity before they graduate, because they talked about the fact that students are graduating, and there are so many opportunities for them, but they need to have the soft skills that some of them are lacking, basic skills like an Excel worksheet, there are just gaps in their skills, and I think that we are aware of that here in the district and we're working toward addressing some of those things. Communication was another big thing they talked about, written communication and verbal communication, how important that is, and that kids are not right where they need to be with those things. The other thing that came out loud and clear was there was a young man there who went undercover into high school for about a year and a half. His name is Shane Feldman, and it was just fascinating. He looks very young, he was 23 at the time, and he went undercover to really understand from the inside what kinds of pressures our students are under, and the things that he shared were fantastic. And the biggest takeaway was these kids need people to just pay a little bit of attention to them. And he said the fact that he had his cellphone in his pocket and would listen to some of these students that he became friends with was huge. They didn't have anybody else in their life to do that. And he said even if it's 20 seconds of being present, that that can just make a real big difference in kids' lives. Kids need mentors. And another theme that came out was the fact that so often we focus on deficits that kids have, but if we could instead focus on the things that they're really good at and help them develop that and help them figure out how they can take that out into the world and do something with that and really work on their strengths. And obviously, you know, they still need their basic skills, but giving them, really working on, you know, most of us didn't go into businesses where, that build on our weaknesses, we went into lines of work that build on our strengths, and that if we can do that for our students, it gives them a lot more natural self-confidence and success in life. So, and a lot of other really, really wonderful ideas. So I was able to go to nine different sessions, and then, of course, talk to people between sessions, and it was a very, very worthwhile event. So that is it, I think, for me.
Okay.
Oh, and the next Communications Committee meeting will be on April 17th, and is that going to be at 10:30, Katie?
I was waiting for you guys to decide who was first and what times you wanted.
Alyssa, were we going to do 9:30 to 11:30, or did you want to do 10?
I think 9:30, I think 8:30 and 9:30.
You want to do 8:30 and 9:30?
Yeah, or 10 and 11.
Oh, okay. Either or. What do you want to do? Do you want to just pick a time?
Let's just do 8:30 and 9:30, and Governance can go at 8:30.
Governance will go first. Okay, so the next Communications Committee meeting will be on April 17th at 9:30 a.m. Thanks.
And speaking of Governance.
17th. Oh, thank you. Governance met on March 27th. We went over administrative regulations, reviewed the board vacancy appointment process, and the memo is attached to this report. It's not, nothing to vote on, it's just a list of advice if this comes up again for future boards. We went over review of board policies on our continuing ed. We had an update on apprentices, asking when that policy's going to go into effect. That was, just happened to be slotted for this review. And we said they continue to work with attorneys to draft the necessary compliance procedures and working on setting up those clear procedural requirements. There were some requests for more updates, maybe through a work session or at another time, so I'm not sure on that. And Dr. Bishop will be providing a district organizational chart, maybe sometime over the summer, at the beginning of the school year, whatever point it's practical. We received a Schedule of Destination 2020 reports for the upcoming year, so if you haven't, I think everybody saw that in the work session today, so that will help with board planning and agenda setting. We reviewed calling into meetings, Board Policy 9320. Right now, if you call in, it doesn't count for attendance, so there was some expressed interest in having that be more consistent with the assembly, so at our next meeting we'll be reviewing assembly language. And then new business is the superintendent evaluation process, so I will be emailing you out your evaluation, and we'll need those back before the next governance meeting, so it's a quick turnaround on April 17th, but we will need those, and then we'll have an exec session to complete them before our new board comes on. And so if you're on the Governance Committee, also please review the superintendent evaluation, because at our next meeting we'll be looking to see if we need to make any changes to that for the coming year. And board policies, actually, those are from on my report, it's from last month, so I'll include those in my email, but that's it. Oh, and our meeting is again right after April 17th at 8:30.
Mr. Donnelly?
I know Mr. Holloman was kind enough to ask this question at the Governance Meeting, but I'm curious when we would take up reconsideration of the National Anthem and Patriotic Policy that was referred back to committee?
I think you remember Donnelly asked me that as well, and I shared that we have the superintendent evaluation already scheduled, and I may or may not be the chair after we're done with it, but I will make sure our next chair has it, for I would assume they would take it right away.
Well, it would be up to the chair to schedule that.
But I'll make sure the next chair knows everything in the queue, or if it, I don't know who it'll be, but...
But I am in agreement that because it was referred back to committee, it should be addressed soon.
Yeah.
I think it would...
Yes, sir.
I think it'd also be available for a motion to schedule at a committee meeting, too, by the full body, but I'll hold off on that and see what the next chair does.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met today, and we got an update from student nutrition, tentatively looking like being okay. We're getting a recommendation, which will also go to the Governance Committee on doing a policy and procedure on crab funding, like the GoFundMe kinds of things, and how that would work in our district. We got a fund balance projection and finance update, and our next meeting is May 6th, and the only thing on that agenda tentatively is cash controls for, I already wrote it down, cafeterias.
Okay. And at this time, I'm going to read the statement before we take any testimony. And the Board welcomes public comments on agenda items, non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all those who would like to speak, the Board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. And at this time, I have Deanna James and Kaylee Wolfring.
Whichever one you like.
Yep.
Is the timer over there, though?
It'll be right up on the screen.
Yeah.
It's going to be over here when it's...
Hi.
Hi.
Watch there.
What, I'm going. Okay, hi, Deanna James. I'm, thanks for letting me talk, and yay for the spring sunshine. I'm a parent at Central Middle School of Science, and today I learned that 12 rooms, including extensive renovation, are planned to be basically taken from the Central students. And PIDEA Homeschool, which is now a co-op, no longer a charter, is supposed to be put in there. That's nearly half of our building. I do support efficient use of buildings, I know that that's a big topic, but I do support that with a viable plan. I do not support a plan that actually debilitates a school program yet again. Okay. I'm disappointed that Central continues to be cut off at its knees. We have a STEM plan there. The staff has a CTE and STEM labs that actually rival some high school programs. We have staff that have developed and implemented a STEM program with design classes and monthly challenges that you've all been invited to. We have staff that have presented at ISTI, which is the International Conference for Science, Technology, and Education, and as recently as October, we had multiple staff members in California presenting at the California STEAM Symposium on how to design and implement a middle school STEM program. I'm also disappointed in the lack of transparency with such, I guess this issue, I don't even know what to call this. Teachers found out today only because they must move their rooms. Parents have yet to be notified. My question is, why is that? My, let's see. A majority of families at this school, not only are we just a newly designated Title I school and learning how to deal with that, our staff is just learning that and what that's going to entail, so that's a lot of stress on them. We have a lot of families that just don't exhibit strong advocacy skills in education. But those, why not, I guess why not tell us? My kid is slated to go there in 7th grade. I had a student who's already gone there and had a great experience. She's now a sophomore at West. I'm going to run out of time because there's just too much here, and we found out today. Basically, I'm just frustrated that we have some of the most marginalized students at Central, and you continue, not you, but they continue to get even more marginalized. Their parents don't advocate. We're going to take these kids that come here every day, and we're going to move them into a smaller set of classrooms in our classrooms. We're also going to close down computer labs because they have to be now recaptured for student classrooms. We're going to lose STEM labs and STEM space in a program that we've developed and that has been somewhat supported. We also have military students that transfer in. They have no choice, they have no voice, these two groups. So I, is that 30 seconds, or am I done? It's done. It's done. It's okay. I have, I have a whole other page, so I will email. Don't worry.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm here to talk about the month of the military child. It's April 1st. It's the first day of the month of the military child. I can only speak from my own experience at Eagle River Elementary School, a school with a very high military population. The month-long celebration at Eagle River Elementary would start April 1st. Military kids would write a story on an index card to read at announcements, during the morning announcements. So they would work with the military liaison for about a month beforehand, writing down these stories. Some of the stories were good and funny, about all the places that they've lived all over the world, and some of the stories were not. Some of the stories were really not fun, and they would read them to all the other kids, which I really felt gave the other kids an insight into what it was like to be a military kid. My kids are not military, and they have lost so many friends. They can now see another perspective from what it's like to lose your friend, but also what it's like for your friend to constantly be losing their friends as well. So the cards would then go onto this big giant map, and there would be a string on a pushpin, and it would have the story, and sometimes they would draw pictures. We plan a day and invite the parents and veterans to come and have purple cows or purple snow cones and make something like a picture frame or a keepsake box. My non-military kids and I would cut hundreds of purple ribbons for Purple Update to handle out, to hand out. I would visit the library and ask for any of the military books, stories, military books that could support our military kids, could teach our non-military kids a little about what it's like, and there really weren't any. There just isn't anything that the library, the district libraries had. So I went to... So I went to the Lions Club, and some personal, some private donors came up with about two thousand dollars to purchase books, military books. We also did a GoFundMe, the library, and then we had an earthquake, so we haven't actually purchased the books yet in the locker, but it will be done eventually. That traveling footlocker can go around to all the district schools. So this is something that I did. I went to the school, and it's important to me that our military kids get this kind of acknowledgement. I'm on the Board of the Directors for the Alaska Veterans Museum, and it's important to me to bring those communities together. And I want to make sure that even after I'm gone, somebody's gonna be there to acknowledge their sacrifices and honor their service. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do I have anyone else that would like to testify? Please come forward and state your name.
I represent myself. I live in the Massacre Valley. I follow the public process. The public process, done appropriately, decision made by the governing body is more likely public interest. My comments are in regard to a concern on this election that's about, that's taking place now. Election day is tomorrow. Concerned to school board candidate that's running. Now, I came across this situation, I gotta be very brief, because it allowed me limited time, as a public, you know, you need to be precise, but the, I'd like to read a section from you, excuse me. Candidates for elected municipal office shall file the statement at a time of filing, a nominating petition, declaration of candidacy, or other required filing for the elected municipal office. Refusal or failure to file within the time prescribed shall require that the candidate's filing fees, if any, and filing for office be refused, or that a previous accepted filing fee be returned, and the candidate's name removed from the filing records. It's come to my attention, it took me a little bit of work, because when it was first noted about a problem, but no real specifics, was the Semi Committee of Ethics and Elections was Wednesday with Barbara Jones last week. Then I found out, and I visited APOC today, and it's Ronald Stafford School Board, and it's the statute that I read was thirty-nine point five oh point oh two oh. And what was in its place instead of removing the name? Now, note this, they inserted the following words, an expert, "An issue regarding Mr. Stafford's filing status with Alaska Public Office Commission is unresolved. This may affect his candidacy. Please consult APOC and Anchorage and so forth." The thing that should have been done is that if the ballots were printed, okay, you don't put referral to APOC, you deal with the issue, because what has happened here is this for the voters of Anchorage. They are, the voters of Anchorage have X candidates, but some may vote for this candidate. But the fact is, they're being told nothing except an issue unresolved. So if this issue gets so-called declared invalid for this candidate, those voters who voted for this candidate, they have two, the X number of choices, end result is, it won't count. And then they could have had an opportunity to vote for someone else, their third choice. And the end result is, what is, what do we have in this election? And as you know, my work began in the April third election, twenty-twelve, the day after, where more than forty percent of the poll prints ran out of ballots, even though they put enough. I came across this, and this is not the way to go. What are we gonna do? A redo election? I doubt they're gonna do that, but it's caused the result of people losing a chance to vote for who they want to, and knowing exactly that the candidates in question, that they didn't comply with state law. And that's what's happened here. And just in closing, with comment, I understand the remarks from the chair noted that, that refer this to the administration. You need to deal with it here, now, and speak, and speak to the people like myself, who are bringing it to your attention, and not do a referral. The election is tomorrow.
Any shout, please.
We need to discuss it now. Thank you. You have, you have any questions?
No. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, thank you. We will move on, then, Ms. Bishop?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I do have a brief report, but my monitor's not working, so let me call it up on my own monitor. Oh, that's okay, I have it, I'll just put it on my computer. I'll just get it on my own computer. There we go. It was just turned off. So, very brief superintendent report, it's, and that's not an April Fool's joke, it is quite brief, just celebrating good things in ASD. Quite a, a bit of action is taken over the last two weeks, and your Diamond High Lady Lynx won their second state basketball championship, and so they were quite excited, and as you know, it was a state, I'm really celebrating, I wish it would have been Diamond, but the other maroon team in the state won, catch a cannon. It was an exciting, great game, really just fun watching students perform at their thing that they like. So I just wanted to share that. And a young gal on that team played her varsity all four years, and she's going to USC on a full-ride scholarship. Last Friday was the GOB, and students from all over the state, one hundred of them, joined representatives from Anchorage for the National Geographic, GOB, Alaska Competition. And it's changed its name to the National Geographic GOB this year, and to let you know, these students have a competition at their school level, and then the winners of that competition then take an assessment from National Geographic to see if they can qualify as one of the top one hundred students. And it was shared that Alaska has some of the highest passing scores for that assessment. So over four thousand students from across the country took it, and Alaska has one of the highest averages or means. These kids, we were just kinda having fun. The third person from the right is Riley, he actually took home the championship last year, and I talked to him right before that, because last year they got a T-shirt and some prizes. This year, the winner took a thousand dollars home. So he's like, I wanna win this year. But we did have a winner from Anchorage, it wasn't Riley, it was an ASD student from Romig Middle School, a young lady named Alana Bell Torado, and she is the first female to win the Alaska GOB in over ten years. So we'll, we'll get her here in front of us at the school board. So that was very exciting last week. Also, another grand championship was the Science Olympiad, and Northern Lights dethroned a team that had had over, I think eighteen years of wins at the middle school, Tealand Middle School from the Valley, and Northern Lights ABC performed exceptional, exceptionally well during this year's state Science Olympiad, taking home the title and an invitation to the Science Olympiad National Tournament at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. Two teams of fifteen students each were led by their science teacher, Carol McKee, who had been teaching at Northern Lights for thirteen years and coaching Science Olympiad. So generally, you take a team of about fifteen, so probably the winners, you can tell the ones with the medals on. It takes similar, like a track meet, where individual wins then support a school-wide win. A lot of other states take all their winners and create a new team. What we do is whichever school had the most wins goes, and so we're just competitive kids, and they will be heading off to that national competition this summer. On Saturday, the twenty-third, this past, I guess it was two Saturdays ago, Romig Middle School Math Counts team, led by Coach John Bruce, took first place overall in the state math counts competition, including three of the top four individual spots, and this is actually Romig's third state math counts title in a row, and they're sixth in the last ten years. And if you'd like more information just to understand what math counts is, you can just look up mathcounts.org and get that. But certainly, this team is terrific. And then finally, it was asked once when we had one of our legislative priorities, where we had the term "learning to know" and "learning to do," and there's this idea that we do learn content, and kids, you know, learn information, but they learn it to do something. And here is, Matthew Prinka is the robotics teacher, he's been in front of us, from Eagle River High School, and he, through his chemistry class there, is actually teach, they're learning how to make soap. And so I'm not sure, they might take that on as a skill and become young entrepreneurs, but they are learning how to make soap. So it's engaging for our classrooms to learn to know, and then also learn to do, and member Mitchell really cited that in regard to students leaving high school. What do they know how to do? And so, when we teach things like tech apps, it behooves us to then really have kids practice, and instead of taking our final exam, have them take the Microsoft Specialist, one final exam, that would demonstrate that they actually have those skills out in the workforce. So there's lots of things where CTE and combined with post-secondary, we're really thinking of, how can we take what we do to turn that into something that our students have an advantage? And so, ongoing news in regard to the state, the House has opened budget discussions with a bill that proposes the following, so you may have seen this last week. The BSA for FY twenty, fully fund the two eighty-seven, remember, which is that thirty million, and it may or may not have some, you know, outcomes that are desired if you receive those funds, and then fully fund state student transportation at the same level. But one of the things that was in there was to eliminate the statewide curriculum program that just was passed last year, and that was McKinnon's bill, and I believe that also supported by Senator Baumehnhoff to really assist, especially smaller school districts, in that research about how to select a curriculum, and school districts like ours would really assist in understanding research-based, evidence-based programs, and then how to implement them. But that, those funds were taken away. We, we could have qualified if they, if the regulations would let you pass or post do a pilot, because we had already started, but that might be where some of the funds are captured. So that was last year's program. And then House Bill one oh six, that was introduced today, would extend this, the secession of state bond debt through twenty-twenty-five. Right now, that prior bill sunsets July twenty-twenty, and it was supposed to come back at fifty-fifty, it pushes this off five more years in regard to that. So I wanted to share that news, and we also are keeping an eye on the forty-one million to ensure that there isn't any legislation proposed that would not fund that. Right now, the forty-one million is in past bond debt, did go down for the House, but we're just working with our city to ensure that that stays that way. And that's just a brief update, fastest one yet.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Okay. Oh, Mr. Donnelly?
Madam Superintendent, did we receive any communication from municipal clerk regarding the matter that was brought up during public testimony, the ballot discrepancy from state law?
We actually have not, but I know that in individual ballots it is, it's really not our, we're not responsible for that. The elections are really the responsibility of the municipality. So I have not personally, although I did read that in our ballot, so, in my ballot envelope.
Let me just add another question.
Sure.
You know, when we were doing our work, work session exercise, there's pretty strong evidence that the schools that are utilizing Spalding for a reading curriculum are doing pretty outstanding. And I was just wondering if we are considering at all expanding Spalding into some additional pilot schools? It seems like a way we could really address the issues regarding getting kids reading by third grade, because the Spalding kids are reading by the end of kindergarten, literally reading books at the end of their first kindergarten year, and in first grade, they're just dominating those stats. Are we looking at all about picking some additional pilot programs?
That's a great question, and I'm quite familiar with Spalding, because I was a principal of a school that utilized Spalding. And it does have, come with some hefty fees in professional development, that the, it's really is a phonics and phonemic awareness program, it's not a full reading program with comprehension, it literally is early skills. And so what we've done, when we selected a program, we chose a program that utilized phonics and phonemic awareness. So we do have a program, not probably as structured as Spalding, because I, again, I'm familiar with Spalding, but it is something that we can provide the professional development that is tied in with the comprehensive side, and those priority plans are just, I mean, if you think of the word priority or non-negotiable, some of those priorities are to ensure that we actually do those pieces of phonics and phonemic awareness daily. So I would say that our program is set to do that, to change how we teach and use a common phonics phonemic awareness program for early literacy of sounds and blending, which is exactly what Spalding does.
But looking at those metrics that we were examining during the work session, some of our schools with the most advantageous demographics have been utilizing the new reading curriculum for the last couple of years, but their first graders are nowhere near what their first graders had at the schools that are utilizing Spalding.
I would challenge, through the President, to look at, I would challenge that assumption, and take a look at the schools that have implemented the program with integrity, and really tried, because you will see that their word attack skills, their nonsense word fluency, their letter sound fluency, as well as their letter naming fluency, all those early literacy are quite high, and actually in the range, not all the way in the range, but they are above seventy percent to eighty percent. So schools that we have seen, and they're not in the most advantageous socioeconomic, they're actually in schools that actually have high poverty, when the program was done for that early literacy, they actually perform as well. There's evidence there, if you were to look at each of the schools. So we're working through some of the implementation. It's honestly, the hardest part is that if you went to school and did not learn the sounds of letters, and we have twenty-six letters in the alphabet, seventy-two sounds of the alphabet, so it's quite different, that it is adult learning, going back and understanding that. That is our, that part of it is the biggest piece, I would say, right now in our implementation. We're reteaching those skills that, you know, when I, I had a reading class, I didn't learn that either when I was, became a teacher, that wasn't part of the program at my school, but yet I had to learn afterwards. So we're doing a lot of the professional development in regard to that. The Spalding certification, to get that, is one week intense, eight-hour days, and I've been through it, and it's, I don't see that that is a scalable program across the district, and then once you bring in a new teacher, if you don't have that scalability, you're falling through on implementation anyway. So we found a program that has solid phonics phonemic awareness, and that actually can be scaled to, I mean, Spalding's great, you know, but I am not sure that the implementation district-wide would be a success because of the expertise needed for that.
So, are you projecting that we'll have more effacy with the teaching of the curriculum, and that's gonna start pulling up some of those scores we were looking at during the work session?
I do believe so, yes. Schools that I'd like, just if the Board would like, Creekside Elementary, Fairview Elementary, some schools that you'd be surprised, the implementation, the early stages with, again, it's, kids usually come to school knowing their letters, because they sing A, B, C. It's the sound, letter sounds, and then turning those into graphemes, what they look like. So those are the two more difficult, because, so if you think phonemic awareness, you can do in the dark, you can hear sounds in the dark, and then the phonics is actually the grapheme, what it looks like. We're relearning those, but those are a solid part of our program, and not only are they a solid part of the program, they make up a majority of what we say should be done every day, ten to fifteen minutes. But we're relearning them, like, we, some folks, we knew different programs, but we're all narrowing down to that program in the book, so.
I'm laughing.
But we're, we're, if, if, I, I wouldn't say that we're not gonna, we're stopping Spalding, but certainly the scalability of Spalding is, is difficult.
Yeah. I'm laughing, because as a Spalding parent, I had to learn those sounds also, so I completely appreciate the challenge. But I do think it's, it's so successful that it's worth considering some expansion of its utilization, depending upon how what we've gone to is working.
Those are good points, thank you.
Any other Board comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
I move to approve the consent agenda. ASD Memorandum Number One Twenty-Six, personnel report, the December seventeenth, twenty-eighteen, executive and regular session minutes, January seventh, twenty-nineteen, special meeting, work session, executive and regular session minutes, and January twenty-second, twenty-nineteen, work session and executive session minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Board, uh, student vote? And that motion carries with seven yays. So on our next, I do have, I'm going to read a statement for our action, public testimony. And an action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President, if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have already signed up in advance or indicate your interest in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the Student Board Representative Vote, before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 143 and adopt the attached resolution in support of the Week of the Young Child, April 8th through 12th, 2019.
Second.
Do we have any public testimony on this item, Memorandum 143? No public testimony, is there any board discussion? No board discussion, student vote?
Yes.
Members please vote. That motion carries with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 144 and adopt the attached resolution in support of Month of the Military Child for April 2019.
Second.
And at this time, I do have Kaylee. Okay, all right. So are there any other individuals that would like to testify on this Memorandum 144? Any board discussion or comments?
Well, as a military child, I will just say that, you know, when I was being raised in the military, we didn't always see these type of things or the support in the community. So I am certainly more than happy to support this.
Student vote?
Yes.
Members vote. And that motion carries with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 145 and support the attached resolution opposing reductions to state education funding.
Second.
And I believe we have Tom Claymire.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board Members, Madam Superintendent. Thank you. On behalf of the Anchorage Education Association, I wanted to thank you for bringing this resolution forward to oppose the Governor's unconscionable budget proposal. As you know, I'm a social studies teacher, and my favorite subject to teach was always economics, because it helps students better understand the world around them, and that really is every teacher's goal. If you were to pop into my classroom during the first lesson of the semester, you'd hear me explain to students that the most fundamental problem that we face, really the reason why we study economics, is that we have limited resources and unlimited wants and needs. Therefore, we must choose how to best allocate those limited resources in order to meet those needs. In our own lives, that simply means that people spend the money they have on the things that they want, that they value the most, and they don't spend it on things that they don't value. At the state level, a budget then becomes far more than merely an estimate of planned revenues and expenditures, but nothing short of a value statement, a reflection of the beliefs of the state as a whole. This is important, because Mahatma Gandhi probably said it best, that the true measure of a society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. It doesn't take a deep dive into the proposal to see that public education is not valued, and our children are not valued there. Who are more vulnerable than our children, or more valuable to our future? To not invest adequately in their education would be devastating for our community and those all across the state. I appreciate your advocacy and the stand that you're taking on behalf of Anchorage students to demonstrate that they are valued members of our society. I urge you to send a strong message to the Governor by voting unanimously to pass this resolution, and to keep the pressure on the legislature to honor the promise made last year when they too demonstrated that they valued public education through increased forward funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So any other testimony on Memorandum 145? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Eugene Carlhaven, I represent myself, I live in the Massey Valley, follow the public process. When the public process, inappropriate decision made by the governing body is more like in the public interest. I do appreciate you having a place for public comment on this item, thank you very much. I've addressed the concern of the budget, state budget crisis, and we didn't have to be, we as Alaskans didn't have to be placed in this situation. It's been put off for a number of years. Now, we have a situation where resolutions such as before here tonight, or the Anchorage Assembly, the previous meeting in the Assembly, where there was no place for public comment, at least you had an opportunity to speak, is dealing with the Governor's approach to how to deal with the budget crisis. Now, I'll just say this, is that I don't see us getting out of this situation, because what I do see in our community, and when I say our community, in Alaskans dealing with it, is we have individuals basically saying is, we want our share, and many people say, me first, me first. There's a basic thing that caused this whole problem, one word, greed. Greed got us in this mess, and I fear that greed's going to keep us in this situation, because we're not, as Alaskans, coming together respectfully, looking at the situation, and dealing as a community, an Alaskan community, with this crisis that's been going on for several years. And as long as we don't come together respectively, because I've seen town hall meetings where there's more like a rally going out there with the legislature, we're not going to resolve this situation. And I fear it's going to be worse than the 80s, with all due respect. We've got to, and the other problem, the significant problem, this whole thing in reference to this, is greed got us in this situation by the parties who, elected officials, members of the public. We're in this situation, but we're not going to get out of it, because every road that I see happening, that I turn on the tube or attending meetings is, it's think of me first, think of our program first, and not thinking about the whole community as a whole, and how do we get about, out of the situation. So I'll just end that with that statement. And thank you very much, and I do appreciate the board, the way you handle this resolution is you had to at least put this on the agenda for the public to have a public hearing. The Anchorage Assembly had a reference to dealing with the Governor's thing, and they put it at this five o'clock portion of the meeting, and there was no way for the public to speak. And they passed their political opinion on that, and let out, left out the public and what we had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony on Memorandum 145? Hearing none, board discussion. Okay, student vote, please.
Yes.
So at this time, we have an on-action items. Is there any item that a board member would like to pull? Seeing no items to pull, we will move on to new business? Anyone have any new business? Public testimony on any non-action or non-action items? No public testimony? Oh, oh, sorry.
So can I give you something? Is that against the rules?
Sure, just hand it to me, and I'll...
Is this just to pass around to you?
Um, yeah, so that you can see what I'm referring to, please.
I thought they were all different.
No, there's just, there's two different ones. One is marked up of each, the rest are not marked up.
Are they supposed to get one of each?
You'll, you'll figure it out. Oh, darn it. I grabbed the wrong speech. Okay, well, I grabbed the wrong piece of paper with the wrong speech, so I'm winging it. So, these are pieces of Eagle River Elementary School, and I brought them because I wanted you to remember that even though things seem okay right now, we've got a lot of resolution, there are some things that haven't been resolved. So don't forget that we still need some answers about busing. So what you have are some maps of areas that used to be bus-only areas for Eagle River Elementary School, that you are proposing now will be walking areas for Homestead Elementary School. The two maps show below and above one of the busiest roads in Eagle River. It's just ridiculous for you guys to not reevaluate this area for being walked by elementary students. I know that it has been evaluated, but never for crossing the street for elementary school students. I know it doesn't matter, your rules say if it's safe, it's safe for any student, but you guys have never evaluated it for crossing that street. Greening Middle School is on the same side of the street as that walking area. On the other side, one of the maps is drawn out with a black line. That takes 45 minutes to walk. It's a long walk. You have to walk on a very icy strip of road where there's not a stop sign, and generally you avoid that area at all costs if you're familiar with Eagle River. So I urge you, I beg you, to please reevaluate this busing situation for those that are, those students that have been moved into Homestead. My other concern is that the students that are now in the optional program, that are now in Fire Lake, these families want to stay in the optional program, and a lot of them live in the previous walking area and previous busing area for Eagle River Elementary. We were told there was a plan, working on a plan for busing, but we haven't heard anything else. So please, let us know what's going on, let us know that you have a plan, let us know if we need to do anything to continue to get you guys to think about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Point of order, Madam President, the folks testifying, I believe, get open testimony as well as testimony on a topic. This is open testimony, we had this...
Maybe I'm on the wrong one, non-agenda items? Am I, did I miss up?
Non-agenda items were before...
This is, again, non-agenda items.
That's what I'm talking about.
Did you testify on non-agenda items already?
They're allowed to speak on twice, that's why I was understood. It's non-agenda, okay? I'm, thank you for checking, thank you very much. My name is Eugene Carlhaven, I represent myself, I follow the public process. When the public process, inappropriate decision made by the governing body is more like public Just to add a footnote to the election and dealing with the school board candidates, the notice that was put in the ballots said the date of March...
You know, I am, I am going to stop you, because you've already testified on that, and we have no control over the...
Point of order, you, just whether you have control or not, I have a right to speak, and it's a non-agenda item.
But you've already spoke on that topic, sir.
For three minutes.
Excuse me, I was adding a footnote to that.
No, sir, it's three, three minutes on...
The board has a right to rule the chair. Are they going to take that right, or are they going to be silent?
I'm assuming no, sir.
You just broke state law.
Thank you.
Oh, you said on another topic, as long as a different topic, then I'll take a different topic here, that doesn't do with the elections. How do you like that one? Nice try. Okay, now, let me start the clock, but I'll give it, take off a few seconds. Last week, I attended Alaska Judicial Council meeting chaired by the Chief Justice. At that meeting, it was dealing with the judgeships and the candidates and so forth, as you read in the newspaper, conflict between the Governor and so forth. The meetings were not taped, and there was no place for public comment. State law, not the open meetings law, requires that you provide a reasonable opportunity to publicly hear. The chair was, who came up to me before the start of meeting, recognized me from other attending, other meetings, introduced each other, and I, and I informed him of that law, and they looked the other way. So with all due respect, it's continued. We've got a serious problem, we're talking about judgeships here, and I didn't, never dreamed I'd be at the level of questioning the Chief Justice, in the state, state chief justice, and this is another subject totally different from earlier this evening. So with all due respect, I'd like to add this line here, and I attend a lot of meetings, and attend a lot of issues, from the railroad, which the Alaska Railroad met last Thursday, same day, and I, they were out of touch with the idea that they need to put notices on the state, state website for their board meetings. That's how bad it is. They were in the dark, and I remind you too, as our chair, one of the members of that board happens to be a former governor of our state. But I'd like to also address this, is that your actions tonight, as far as cutting me off of previously comments, was unfair, and those who heard this video or audio would raise concern of being cut off in this matter. The most important decision a governing body has to make, and yes, you're not in charge of elections, is, is the certification of the election, and you need to be kept informed. And the end result is you cut up, you cut me off on trying to bring information, additional information on that subject. So I'll end with that, and we wish everyone the best, but it's proved myself that it's only going one direction, and it's not a good direction. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, just one footnote, I couldn't help but notice, this is not going after you on a question, but they're pretty much, that press room left, you know, it was, the meeting was over early, I mean... was over early, I mean, getting over early, but they left early. So it just says with the press that are here with video cameras, that they really don't wanna pay attention too much to what's being said. Thank you very much, and have a good day and evening.
Thank you. Any school board, I'm sorry, oh, yes. Is it a different topic?
Madam President, I think it's one public testimony per topic, but we can take your testimony and we'll follow up with you, like written testimony?
Yeah, no, I mean, I can email it, that's why I just, I would say if we are doing an extra, I could just jump in and tag on.
No, thank you. So at this time, do we have any school board or administration comments? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
I did submit a proposed board rule change, policy change, to the governance committee that would say at our committee meetings, that we would have a comment period for the public. I didn't identify how long that would be, it could be brief, because it's so challenging to get enough time in to do our meetings, but I do think it's something we should consider as a body, since we haven't had that policy before.
So I'm assuming the governance committee has that and is taking it under consideration.
I have a list, so back in December, I solicited from the full board everything you wanted for the spring, and some board members provided that in January, and then I built my agendas and shared those each month, and I would encourage next year to do a similar fashion, and we'll provide all of that, that board members have suggested.
Comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Holloman.
Just say that in years of attending committee meetings as a citizen or a teacher's representative, any number of people have been able to simply put themselves in a speaking order, whether they were members of the meeting or not. It doesn't necessarily occur to people to do it, but at times when people have asked and since then, simply raised my hand, and I was put in the order just like anybody on the committee would be. So I, I think our committees generally function in a very open way if, if people are there. And I think you chaired a meeting that was far more public comment than it was member comment by a long shot.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holloman, that's true, every meeting I've chaired, I've always allowed public comment at, but that has not always been the practice. Different chairs of the committees have utilized different rules. So my suggestion is that we adopt a rule as a board of whether or not we would have public comment, and I come down on the side of allowing some public comment at every meeting, because I do think it's more consistent with the existing state statutes.
Well, I do agree, when I was not on the board and would come to committees, I, they didn't take testimony, so nobody allowed you to say anything, because believe me, I wanted to say a lot and I couldn't. So I, I think every committee chair at this point, I don't know that we, do we have a board policy, that there's no, I thought it was up to the committee chair.
I believe the Open Meetings Act, I, I've looked at what member Donnelly's shared, and I think it's a worthy consideration, I don't know right off the top of my head. I've had people have public comment if they showed up and tried to make sure they felt welcome, had an opportunity to talk, if we had time or...
Right.
But I, I think it's worthy for our board to discuss best meeting practices. You know, we're kind of busy this month doing superintendent evaluation, but we have the summer to make sure we're refining our processes, and I think that's a good ongoing practice.
Right. And I almost don't think this should come up in a committee meeting, this needs to be a board decision, as far as how those committees operate, whether allowing, well, it can go through the committee and then present to the board if they'd like to enact that. But note taken. I have one comment. I went to Appenglow and saw the science fair, or the science, what did we go see? Fire, yeah. And it was kindergarten through sixth grade, and it was absolutely amazing. I have never enjoyed anything so much in my life. I had a little first grader that just told me all about his project, and I looked at him, I said, can I ask a question? And he said, no. And so, you know, out of the mouths of babes, right? But they were very articulate, they knew their stuff, and I was, I was very excited to be there. And thank you, Ms. Snelling, for joining me, and Mr. Holloman. Any other comments? Yes?
So I'm not, this has been a fun little social thing, social experiment this evening. I'm not normally in the practice of sharing my personal life, but I do want folks to know that I do have a new last name, because I did recently get married, and so you guys will start to see it come through on different documents and emails and other things like that, but figured I wouldn't get that out of the way right now.
Actually, I did see that, and I was like, who is that? Like, do we have somebody that's not supposed to be there?
May I announce, Mrs. Vekalas, not Mrs. George Vekalas.
Ooh, now it gets really good. Well, congratulations, congratulations. Mr. Holloman?
I would like to say that I think it'd be good at a work session if we could be briefed on the impact to Central. Like a lot of people, I made the assumption that there was unused space, and I realize that may not really be the truth, because most schools will expand to fill the volume of the container they're in. But I'm sure it does have an impact, and, and I would like to know exactly what that does and all. And I will say we will delight in watching to see if you forget and use the wrong name a whole bunch of times, not like some other people on the board have done, but we'll be watching.
Can you just add one more quick?
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
I was wondering if the, if the voters approve the bonds, which has the money in it for school security upgrades, right now service, several of the bathrooms are closed, actually, because they don't have adequate security cameras to cover those bathrooms egress and coming in and out.
Okay.
And, which makes it, you know, very challenging for the students. So I'm just wondering if that's on the list for the upgrades that would be done?
I can, through the President to Member Donnelly, I'll take a look at that, I believe the schools that were on the bond, and we'll do, we'll update the board on this, were majority of the elementary schools, but we have taken, similar to the notice today, the upgrades at Chugak were for the same reasons, putting cameras where there's out of view, and we did that now that we have both schools in there. So the cameras, while they may not be part of the bond, they are on to get, but I'll get the answer in regard to service and when that is on the timeline. So all the schools that had blind areas, we're addressing those with the digital cameras. That's a good question, because that's come up several, I mean, from principals, they want all views to be able to be seen. Thank you.
Anything else? Board meeting is adjourned. What am I supposed to say? I don't know.